I see Rick and me and you, I guess, City of Livingston. And do I do anything? Do I have to? Oh, Carla, Carla's on the line, hang on. Carla? Hi, I'm zooming, but you weren't there to open it up, so I've had the city open it up. But Rick Van Aken and I are on the line. Yeah. Oh, no, I sent that all to you last week. I sent an agenda to everybody. Oh, now Allison just came on. Hello, Allison.
Hi, Bob.
Yeah, so, so in any case, we've got the three of us on right now.
And hi, Rick.
Hi, Allison. Nice to meet you.
I don't know if I can do anything on the phone. You have, here's it. Oh, hang on. Hello? Allison, who's this? Okay, hang on. Hello? I guess that's it, Carla. We're gonna go on, you know, I should probably start the meeting, huh? Or what? You wanna? Last week sometime, I sent it all out, but then today, this, this afternoon, Faith sent the contact on how to get into the, how to get into the Zoom. Hang on just for a second, everybody. You have to put the ID number in and the code and all that. Do you want me to do the, give you the, the ID number? Carla's getting on, so we're gonna wait a second. If that's okay. Allison, welcome to our group.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, I'm Bob Ebner, and this is Rick Van Aken. Rick, you're, you're off, Rick. You're. You're muted, Rick. I'm waiting for Carla to come in.
You didn't wanna hear me suck some paper.
Okay, well, I got Lisa Harold just came on. Hi, Lisa.
Sorry, Bob. Got it. I'm here.
Lisa?
No, it's okay. We, we're waiting for Carla to join in right now.
Hi, Rick.
How are you doing, Carla? How you doing, Lisa? Carla?
I haven't heard anything from anybody.
We got my head down here. Come on.
Okay, all right.
Mail.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna. Okay, can you see everybody else? No, I just have an iPhone down here. Well, wait. I. Okay, and Allison should be there, and Lisa should be here.
Who's on there, right?
Oh, one at a time, and I think you need to go to view.
Allison, what's your last name?
It's Vicenzi.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, you probably, you should have a video down in the lower left. It's right now, mine says stop video, but you have, you have to click that to get, get on video. I have no idea. I can hear you on the phone. I can't hear you on, on the screen. Okay, well, why, when I, I'll put. I got you on speakerphone now. No, we can't hear you, but I put you on my speakerphone.
Okay, let me just try setting one more time.
Because otherwise, I can do the meeting, and this lets you know what the agenda is and everything.
Well, why don't you go ahead and start it, and I will continue to see if I can get on.
All right, you may wanna go back off and try to get back in again. Sometimes that, that helps. So, any case, we are recording, and while Carla tries to get into us, as vice chair, I'm going to call the meeting of the Livingston Urban Renewal Agency, January 20th, meeting to order. I don't know if you all know, Lisa Harold was with us earlier last year, and we got permission from the county to hire her to be our secretary, because in the past, she was our secretary, and they do not provide secretaries. So, as the URA agency, it is, is our purview to hire a secretary. So, Allison, this is Lisa, Bob, and Rick, and we're trying to get Carla on the phone right now, who has been our chair. But welcome, Lisa. Allison, you've been, you're in the East Coast now, right?
I am in the Midwest.
Midwest, where in the Midwest?
In Michigan.
Oh, Michigan. Oh, it's border states.
Oh.
I grew up in Ohio, so we were, and spent a lot of time up in Michigan, so.
Yeah, it's beautiful. It is.
Yeah, well, welcome to, you got a chance to look at the stuff that was sent to you.
Yes.
Good, so you have a little bit idea of what we're doing. Your resume was very impressive, and I particularly liked you wanting to provide, do something in the community in which you now live, and that's what we're really trying to do here is the URA, is improve the downtown and improve the neighbor, the whole area, keep it vital, keep it economically sound, and really retain historic quality of Livingston. But anyhow, did anybody get my agenda? And I sent out? Okay, so we'll just.
What? Bob, this is Carla, I'm waiting for you to let me in now.
Oh, I don't know how to do that. That's what I asked her, she said she was gonna have me be the leader, but then I don't know how to let you in.
Here she is.
Upper right-hand corner, yeah, upper right-hand corner, there should be something that. You, that I show up.
We have Alex. Here's Kyra's here now. She's in.
Whoa.
So, Kyra, we're just being introduced you to Allison, who's our new member, and Lisa, who we've hired as their secretary. Now, how can I, how can I let you in? I don't see where I do that.
I see Carla.
Somebody already did, because I, she's on my screen.
I see Carla.
On your screen?
Hi, Kyra.
Hi.
That's Kyra, you have an F, but. But what we don't have.
I've got Carla on my screen.
Oh, there she is. I got you now. You're there, and can you turn on, I can hear you on my phone. Can we hear you on the, on the video?
One moment.
I'm gonna.
I can see everybody, so I can get that here, me.
Okay, well, anyways, can you, can you hear us now, Carla? I can't hear you. Carla, have you, have you punched in the audio? You should ask if you wanna join audio.
Okay, I got you. Do you have me?
Okay, you're now, that's great, and it's very exciting, because we now have another member of our group. We still have one potential opening that may be opening up, but right now, we've got the five, this full, full crew. We got five people. So anyhow, I, I think everybody but you, Carla, did not get, unless you can access the minutes that I, the agenda I drew, I drew up. But we're calling the order, the roll call, we have it here, and we've introduced Lisa and Allison, and so we'll go ahead. I have, under consent reports, I have approval of the December 9th minutes. To my knowledge, we never got December 9th minutes, so I know a couple of things we discussed. We did, we discussed, we approved our budget, and we also discussed opening up the grants for the downtown community. Oh, let's start sharing screen. What happened here? Now you're sharing a screen. I don't wanna share a screen. Who's sharing now? There we go. Now we're back. The, and we also talked about opening up the grants for the downtown, as well as for the one, several blocks on Third Street for sidewalks, and checking with Faith at the county, at the city, that was never done, so we need to tell them that we do wanna open up the grant applications. So hence, we do not have any applications at this time.
Right.
So I have to pursue that. I'll give her a call tomorrow, and we'll make sure that that gets done. Yes.
Do we need to take some sort of action to open up those? Or you just need to notify them? Is there some official?
Well, we tell the city, and the city will publish it. So, so all we have to do is verify to them, and that wasn't done after the last meeting. And we don't have December 9th meeting, so we really will have to just put that off till the next month. Hopefully, we can find those meeting notes, or I can try to remember what we did through.
Bob, I have the notes. I just have to, I just have to type them out and get them out to you guys, and I apologize for it, but.
Okay, okay, well, we'll, we'll just put that off till next month. Meeting will, to approve the December 9th meetings, and then we'll have, and then we can also approve January 20th, today's meetings at that time.
Okay, so my, my question is, though, since we're opening them late, do we wanna change the closing dates?
Yes. What, what do we, tell me what we have now.
We're supposed to, we're supposed to open them on January 1, and they're supposed to, they're supposed to close on February 28.
Okay, so.
Two months.
Let's move it to March 31st.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go from right now to March 31st.
Okay.
Hey, Bob.
Yes.
They need to, they need to go from the publication date to, for two months.
Well, I'll have.
If you say right now, people won't see them for, what, another two weeks now?
Well, what we'll do is I'll have Faith handle the dating of that. I'll say two months from publication.
Right.
We can do it that way.
Okay.
Because sometimes the city can be a little slower than us, and they have their timeframes on agendas for the city commission. I, even though I don't think the city commission has to give approval for this, because we're an entity under ourselves, and that's within our purview. But I'll check, I'll check with Faith about that. I did submit the approved budget that we approved last time to the city. I'm not sure if it's been presented to the commission, but I know that the city manager and Faith have copies of that, that we approved last time, and I sent all that to all of you via emails. So you should have all those documents.
Well, that, that was supposed to be on last night's agenda.
Okay, all right, well, good, but then in that case.
It should have been approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Now, the next thing on the agenda is scheduled public comment. I thought Jack was probably going to come in from Texas. He wanted to join us, but he obviously hasn't, so we have really no scheduled public comments. Next thing we need to do is the election of officers for the next year. So, current officers are, Carla is the president, chair, I'm vice chair, and of course, Lisa is the our secretary. We, we have no treasure, because that all goes through the city. We approve funding, and then they approve what we approve, and then they take care of the funding mechanism. We tell them what funding we find appropriate for their projects. So, how will you feel, Carla? Are you overwhelmed? Do you wanna stay as chair, or do you wanna just stay as a committee member?
I would like to stay as a, I would like to stay as a committee member and give up my chair position.
Okay. So, I guess we're open. I mean, I'm open. I'll stay on, I'll stay on either as vice chair or as chair, however, the.
I would, I would like to make a motion to put Bob as chair.
We'll need a second to that.
I will second that.
Okay, any other nominations for the chair of Urban Renewal? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your confidence. I appreciate that. Who would now like to be vice chair?
Will Carla stay on as vice chair?
You know what? I just have to say this, and I feel bad about it, because I haven't been this disorganized for a long time, but my business, my business is taking so much of my time right now. I'm down to me and one other employee during the day. So I'm on the floor full, full-time, and, you know, I'm putting in 12-hour days just to be able to get any bookwork at all done. So I just think I need to not be in a position right now.
Okay, well, let me just mention one other thing before we talk about who else might like to volunteer as vice chair, is that Carla, Kyra, and I, our four-year terms are up in June. So we either have to re-up, or we have to look for additional members. So, Kyra, if you wanna re-up, then possibly you would be vice chair, but I think if you're planning on not re-upping, we should consider someone else for the vice chair.
I just don't think that I have the time that I could commit to being a vice chair. I have a feeling I will probably re-up.
Okay, well, in that case, Rick, what do you think? Would you, I would include Allison, but I think you, maybe you'd like to have a couple sessions with us before you might wanna be vice chair. I don't wanna speak for you, though. If you were interested, Rick is our next newest member, and basically does what the.
I'm not sure exactly what I'm getting into, but, but I guess I could, I guess I can follow Bob's lead here. I just try to do what Bob does.
Well, what I know, what I normally do in other organizations where I am chair, is even if I'm not gonna be there, I work on the agendas and all that with.
Right.
Here, so it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be left alone in the process.
And, and you're hardly ever not around.
With COVID, it's true.
I'm not gonna nominate myself, but if somebody.
Okay, well.
I will nominate Rick as vice chair.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, well, thank you very much for your confidence in me and in Rick, and hopefully, with the new grants coming out, we actually have something to do, so, since the last year, we really haven't that much to do, so hopefully, we'll have more meetings. And then the under, the next agenda item is all the continuing discussions, grants, which we've already discussed. And then there was, have other, is there any other older continuing discussion that I did not think of for the agenda that we'd like to discuss?
What do you think, Carla? Was there, is there something else?
That, I'm just kind of, well, one thing we put on hold was the traffic wraps, because we didn't have Kyra at the last meeting.
Right. Now, now that program, we have budgeted at $6,000. It's just now up for that program to get up and running, finding someone that wants to do the wrap and organize the artists and all that. I'm not in any position to do that. The Livingston Center decided they did not want to do it. I know that, I think Kyra was looking, weren't you talking to the BID?
I, I passed everything off to Stores Bishop, and and I guess what would, what entity is he with?
I think that's the.
And also his, his business, his framing business, too.
Yes, so I, I passed everything off onto him, and I was in the middle of completing a construction project, so I actually didn't, haven't checked in with him, so I can give him a call and find out how it's going.
Yeah, or if it's going.
Yeah.
Well, anyways, anyways, we did budget it, and I had talked to, looked at what we had in the past, and as we passed in our budget last time, it was five controller boxes, three large and two small, and we budgeted based upon a liberal interpretation of funding last time, giving more money to individual artists at $6,000. So, if you, I don't know if you had those figure, that figure before, you can present it to him.
Yeah, you know, and, and I was really pushing for paying Stores a an administrative sum, lump sum, and I don't know if you guys took that into account.
We paid, we, we authorized $6,000 for the project, however it wants to be divided.
Okay, so, I don't, I don't know if that, like, I don't even remember how much the last project cost.
It was a lot less than that.
Okay, so.
I think, I think we can say that if we realize that we need to pay somebody to do this project if we wanna get it done. So, I think there's money in the budget that, you know, we can pay him a stipend at the point in time when that comes across, and I don't know if we need to set a limit on that, but I, I don't think that's a big, huge crossroad.
Yeah, you know, what, what I can do is I, when I talk to Stores, I can ask if he can join our meeting, our next meeting, and so he can fill us in on, on everything that, you know, he's done or is going to do, if he has any cost projections or anything like that.
Well, I, I had in my files that information, and Kyra, you may have that, as to what they cost before and what we did before, so he should be able to get a hold of that, figure out what we had done, and, and where the costs go.
Yeah, and I, I gave him my contacts, and, I mean, I gave him everything, so.
Okay.
Um, I, I can definitely ask if he can take the time and join our next meeting to just kind of bring us up to date, give us a status report.
That's excellent. That's excellent.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. The other thing I have now is under action items, and I sent that to everyone. I, we needed to do an annual report, and because of COVID and several other organizations that did not get the annual report to them, they extended it to into February, so I, I did email that to everybody, so I think I covered all the bases, but if anybody, having read that, see, there should be additions.
I'm, I'm just gonna take time to read it quick, Bob.
Yeah, no, no problem. Allison, I'm sure you had a copy. Probably see that we weren't really doing too much last year, because most of the monies went for the CIP project, and we have debt financing on the bond that we had did, that we really didn't have much money. Now, we do have money this year, and we now had 187, I guess, $185,000, which we divided up, oh, no, 114 discretionary fund, thousand, and we based our budget on that. When the new tax financing comes in, we'll have additional funding, so that should be increasing every year. Do you, do you understand what the increment is that we talk about, how that works?
What do you mean by this?
Well, what happens when they established the URA, people's property taxes were at a certain level. And then for the, for the extent of the, of the, of the time period, which was renewed with the bonding for another, what was it, 10 years, I think it is?
Yes.
Any increase in that taxable value above what it was when it was frozen comes to the URA, and that becomes tax increment financing, where we finance, and the city can finance, they've been doing their city upgrades, our sidewalks, using that funding. That goes to us to use at our discretion and, and through interviews, grant applications, and things like that.
Great.
So that's getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
Great, and so on the budget, the, the line items at the bottom feed up into the 114,000?
Yeah, it should.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
My calculations were.
Yes.
They should. We also have reserve for emergencies, at Carla's suggestion, was $20,000, which we, I hadn't put that in. I had it in facade programs and Third Street sidewalks, but when we decided to do it this way. The reason for the, Shannon, who is director of Public Works, I chatted with him, and he felt that the 15,000, I can't remember how many sidewalks that would do, it's in my notes, but he thought that was plenty for the first year. 15,000 is based upon what the cities thought they could do. So, did you get a chance to read that annual report yet, Carla?
Yeah, and I'm fine. I think that's great, Bob.
Okay, so without any problems, I'll have a resolute, I think I, I'd like to have a resolute, a vote on it to approve the URA 2020 annual report. So could I get a motion to that, please?
Awesome.
And a second to that.
I'll second it.
And Carla seconds that. Okay, all in favor of approving URA 2020 temporary annual, I mean, not temporary anymore, annual report?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Okay, great. Um, I have next is progress reports. I don't think we have any progress reports. The biggest one we, Kyra already gave us is the fact that we're gonna get stores involved with, uh, the, the wrap. And I, uh, just for you know, uh, know, Allison, when we talk about that, uh, there the controller boxes, and there's five of them that right now, uh, what's that we had done before we wrap them with pictures, artists, uh, original art. And when they redid the traffic signals, those were all taken out. So we're reactivating the project to try to wrap them again. Uh, you see a lot of that already in Bozeman. If you go to Bozeman, you can see where the wraps are. And you may have seen them here before. They tore them all out. But, um, that's what that program was for. And I guess that's probably, I, that's the only progress report I have. Any other members have anything else? We do have commissioner comments coming up.
I, I have nothing.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, URA commissioners' comments that aren't necessarily attached to the agenda. Uh, for any comments you'd like to have that aren't agendaised or non-voting, uh, comments.
So I, I have, um, a comment, um, Tracy Rake. I believe that's how you say her last name. Um, so she had called the city to talk to either Carla or myself or, or someone on the board. And I had called her back this morning. And so she and some partners have purchased that building that, um, uh, the, that was, who was it? The doctor and his sister, um, where the Campion Restaurant is.
Oh, yeah, right on the corner of Main and, um, Calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Coleman's, the Coleman's. I think it's their old building. So Tracy Rake, um, and some other people have bought that building. And she had asked what the, um, what the, what the grant process was. She does have access to our grant application. Um, but she just wanted to kind of talk to a, a human being, I think. And so I, I tried to explain to her is, you know, basically, you know, the process, which is pretty straightforward. And then I passed her on to you, Bob, if she had any other questions.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, you know, 101 North Main Street, which is the address of that is out of compliance with the Historic Preservation Commission. And that should have been passed on to her because of the windows on the front of Main Street did not conform to what was supposed to be done. They replaced the windows without permission and we went and talked to them. The windows that were replaced on Calendar Street were in kind and they're refined, but they did not do the windows on Main Street. So I'm not sure what implications that has, but they should have been passed on between the owners because the Coleman's, there's been an owner since the Coleman's. That should have been relayed to them. I'm not sure if that would have any implication on any other grant application to do, but I think she should at least know that that is something that is outstanding with the city. Uh, but, uh, any other additions they wanted to do would be approved. I know they wanted to do, and they got approval to redo the awnings on Calendar Street, which was never done. But they did get approval to do that. And that would be qualified under a grant application. So uh, that has already been approved by the, uh, Historic Preservation. So I'll talk to her.
Good, because I, uh, I told her that the windows would probably fall under the, um, the energy efficiency grant. Are, we're still doing that, correct?
No.
No, we're not doing that anymore.
Oh. But I, it would, I think it would fall underneath, under facade.
Yeah, I do.
Remember, all, all of her windows were replaced already. They've already been, the second story windows were all, all replaced already.
I, I, I don't know what she was, I just told her that I, I thought we still had the energy efficiency program, but I guess I, uh, misspoke.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we canceled that, you know?
The, the, um, the only thing we retained was the facade, Kyra.
And, and sidewalks, which we have.
Well.
I read, do you know how to spell Tracy's last name?
I, I think it's R-A-I-C-H.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's Tracy with an I, I think.
Oh, is it?
Okay. And so Bob, that would be great if you could just maybe give her a call. She said she had your number, but, um.
Yeah, we're all, we're old acquaintances.
I thought as much.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, well, that, that's great. And, uh, and, uh, I can tell her after check, checking with the faith as to the timeframe for those applications to come into us. Uh, just for your information, Allison, in case it wasn't in the brochure, uh, the, the manuscript you read is that we approve a grant, a certain amount of money. They've submitted a grant, we review it, and we either approve the money that they're asking for, or we, uh, parcel, part of it out based upon what we think comes within our purview. Then that goes to the city commission for approval, but these grants are payback. They're not upfront money. So you have to do the project. Then you come back to make sure it's done in accordance with what you said you were doing. And then you get the money paid back by the city. So that it's not an upfront grant. It's a, it's a payback grant.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other, uh, commissioner comments? Uh, you want to say anything, Allison, uh, from afar?
Uh, I want to say thank you for welcoming me so greatly and, uh, for your enthusiasm. Um, thank you for sharing the documents ahead of time. It was really helpful to read the overall city, um, board document. I hadn't seen that before. So that helped me understand how the city overall works and how the organizations work together. So I appreciate that a lot. Um, and I'm just excited to be here and I'm definitely learning. So I hope to catch up quickly.
Rick?
Um, well, I was just going to say, the, the, the first thing I thought about was, um, that, uh, so Allison, uh, you have a feel for a good idea of what the boundaries are of the URA?
I think she got a map.
You got the, you got the.
I saw the physical boundaries, yes, and then even the, the budgetary boundaries as well.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, that was very clear.
I understand, uh, those things. Um, well, I guess the other thing I was wondering about was, um, wanted to make sure that, uh, that you weren't, you didn't get confused at all if you've been following the, the goings on, uh, with the, uh, the Business Improvement District and how that's changed. That's a separate program, right?
Okay.
Uh, so it doesn't, doesn't influence the URA or URA boundaries or anything. But, uh, boy, it's easy to get, to me, it's easy to get, people can, people get confused about with all the acronyms and the
Mm-hmm.
stuff.
The only thing where we interlatch, Rick, is we have been paying for the flower baskets.
Flowers. And you're trying to send that over to them?
Pardon?
And you're trying to make that part of the Business Improvement District instead?
Well, originally, we, it was going to be temporary until they got their feet on the grounds and got some money. So that's something I, and Carla mentioned it last time. It's something that we need to talk to them about because it wasn't supposed to be a continuing program of the URA, only an interim program, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, that's correct.
So we need to discuss that with them. Uh, it's not in our budget per se, but, uh, it, it could be, uh, under, you know, reserve funds if we so want to do that. But I think we need a serious conversation. The BID has changed immensely. Uh, as far as, uh, uh, how it's run. I'm confused myself in how the whole thing is done. And Patricia Grabow makes it more confusing with her letters to the editor. So I'm not quite sure.
Bob, the flowers are in our budget.
They are?
Yeah, we put $12,000 for.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we put $12,000 in this year. Right, I'm sorry. Yeah, this year, but we want to have a discussion with them to see whether we want to continue doing it. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And a 12,000 was based upon, uh, previous year's cost.
Uh, and the fact that we are going, we have new lights, so we'll have more, a need for more baskets.
Right.
Yeah.
So, uh, uh, now, Allison, do you have any idea what your schedule is? We're gonna see you in Livingston and within the next couple of months?
Yes, um, yes. Is the next meeting going to be in person?
Uh, I, I think we go meeting to meeting based upon, uh, the conditions of the virus. Uh, the new strain is now entering into Montana. And, uh, it's not any more caustic, but it's much easily transferable according to the, what I read tonight in the New York Times. So, uh, I, most of my meetings now are all done Zoom, except for one, which is later tonight. Uh, so I think we should just go month to month as to whether it's Zoom or in person. A lot of it has to do with whether the city wants us to be in the city. Wants, wants us to be in the city county building.
Mm-hmm.
I know you are, uh, Historic Preservation does meet onsite at the city county building. But, uh, you know, and be up to everybody else. If you want to start meeting, we, as we get closer into the end of February, we can discuss that as to whether we want to do it remotely or whether we want to do it face to face. Um, but, you know, I think we, I personally think we should wait and see what the conditions are.
Um, in my own case, I, I feel like I, I feel like I, I need to see, uh, wait as long as, at least as long as I can get a vaccine anyway.
I think Rick and, I think Rick and I will have vex, will have the first shot before next meeting.
Oh.
But I'm not sure.
We're in the next bracket, but, but are they gonna get the vaccine?
Well, they got 200 dose, 100 doses, doses today that went out. And when I called at three in the afternoon, they were gone. So I just have to check week to week.
If you, if you call the county complex, um, 222-4100, if you call them, you can put your name on a waiting list.
Oh.
Okay.
And, and so I would suggest you do that. Um, the county seems to be more proactive than our, than the clinics and our healthcare. Um, because I have a lady who works for me who's 85 and she calls and calls and just gets the runaround out at the clinic. But, um, we called the, the health department and they have a list going. So you can sign up for a list.
Thank you, Carla.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. And then I think it's administered, uh, through the health department, not by the hospital.
As I understand it, yes.
Right.
They, well, I don't know. That's still unclear to me, sorry.
They're supposed to eventually be able to get it at the, at the drugstores, but I don't think they're doing it right now.
Well, right now, I think they're keeping it out at the clinic. If the clinic's overwhelmed, they will pass it off to the drugstores.
Right.
But, um, that, that's what I understand that they tell me right now. Um, I don't know how true that is. Um, I, I just hope sometime we get thousands of vaccines in Livingston instead of this the small amount that just goes out the door so quickly.
Yeah, drumps and grabs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But at least, at least, or at least it's happening, which is a positive thing.
Okay, are there any other commissioner comments? If not, uh, the last thing on the agenda is public comments. Go ahead.
Wait, wait, I have, I just, just an update is that, um, at the last city commission meeting, they did approve the LBID to re-up. So that was approved at the last meeting, just FYI for everybody. Um, you know, I, I said. I said on the LBID and the URA, and, um, I think the combination of the two, especially early on, was real vital to getting everything off the ground and looking as good as downtown looks. So I'm, I'm, I'm really encouraged that the LBID got approved again.
Right. And there is some kind of confusion with that taking over the, uh, certified, uh, local government thing, wasn't it, or that?
Well, you know, it, it, there was confusion amongst those who wanted the chamber to keep it. But, right now, the only reason I am also on that board is because it is the board of the LBID. We're trying to set it up as its own board soon, but we had a lot of paperwork to take care of that just needed a um, committee to be able to take care of a lot of that. Um, through this COVID, we took it, oh, it over just before COVID hit. And through COVID with Kristen Galbraith and Chris King, um, and I think I'm understating this, but they got close to, I'm just gonna say a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in COVID grants to help out, um, you know, businesses with masks and sanitizing stations and, um, promotions that went on during COVID to encourage people to wear masks. And so you know, they did a lot with that CBB money or that CBB right away. And so, um, I know Kristen Galbraith is the, um, chair for that, for the CBB, and Chris King is vice chair. So they have done a great, um, moving it forward. They have done a lot already. It's, it's actually quite impressive what they've done in a very short period of time.
Would that be a committee under LBID or it'll be a separate entity?
Um, no, it's gonna be, I think, I, I'm, I might be misspeaking, but I believe it's going to be a separate entity as soon as we have it up and running and things straightened out.
Okay. Okay, a la, one of the last things I have, uh, is, uh, it came up at the Historic Preservation Meeting, is there whether we want to continue to have written minutes or whether we just want recorded minutes. Uh, the, uh, the Historic Preservation Board wanted to continue with written minutes. Uh, none of us wanted to have to go back and listen to things in case we wanted to find out what's, uh, has been approved and whatever is approved. So I would, uh, I would prefer having written minutes uh, that Lisa would provide to us based upon her thing. And if we wanted to, we can go back and listen to the recorded minutes. But, uh, I like having written minutes because it really gives me a chance to go back several months at a time. So I can see what we've done and what we haven't done. I don't want to go back and listen to a whole meeting to figure out what we've been talking about. So what are the commissions feeling?
Me too.
Me too.
I agree.
Okay, unanimously, Lisa, then, uh, as soon as you get those up and running, just email them out to us. It'll be greatly appreciated.
And I will, I will try in the next, um, week or so to, to get the minutes from the last, at least, at least the, um, December meeting out.
Okay.
And, and I promise you, they will not be as good or thorough as Lisa's.
Right.
Well, I think, um, now that the, uh, now that these meetings are online, all of the groups that, um, all of the other committees are going to much more basic minutes just because we, you can go back and listen to the minutes if you want. So my, my minutes probably won't be as thorough as they were in the past. But I enjoy seeing your faces every month.
And we enjoy seeing you, Lisa.
And at least I would say, Lisa, they, they shouldn't just be discussed and passed. I mean, they need to be a little bit more thorough as to how we discussed it and all that, since we are dealing with money. We're dealing with the, uh, city's money. Uh, I think that they maybe need to be a little bit more detailed than when, when you don't have to, uh, when you're not dealing with public funds.
Got it.
Okay, anybody else? If not.
My only, uh, Mike, uh, Rob, Bob, my only question would be, uh, so when is our next meeting? It's always, is it always gonna be on the third Wednesday? It's always, is it always gonna be on the third Wednesday?
Yes, so that would be the 17th of February at this point.
Okay.
At fourth, at 4:30, and we will, we will determine the week before whether it'll be zoomed or in person.
Okay, um, can I follow Kyra's lead, I see she had a glass of wine there.
Rick, you and I have another meeting tonight, we're gonna be doing cocktails, so.
Oh, well, one glass of wine.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
A second? Allison, you wanna, okay. Uh, all in favor of adjourned, and thank you, welcome, Allison, and uh,
Thank you.
We'll, we'll see you all in a, in a month, if not sooner.
Looking good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You all.
Happy New Year, thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
See you later tonight, Bob.
Yep.